I'll reconvene this meeting at the Lane County Board of Commissioners and state that Commissioner Lichen will be a few moments late. Welcome to the afternoon session, y'all. Happy Valentine's Day. Wait just one moment if you'll bear with me. Item 12 on our agenda today is Public Works. We have before us Order 17-02-14-11 in the matter of authorizing the county administrator to enter into an agreement with the state of Oregon by and through the Oregon Military Department, Office of Emergency Management, OEM, to receive federal funds. Mr. Mokrheyski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Orin Schumacher, our road maintenance manager, is here.
Yes.
Covered this item. Orin, how are you today?
Good, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, Chair Farr.
Welcome, Orin.
I will gladly repeat that long statement if you want, but I am here to try to seek approval from the board in the matter of authorizing the county administrator to enter into an agreement with the state of Oregon by and through the Department of the Military, Office of Emergency Management, to receive federal funds provided by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, better known to most of us as FEMA, for repair and restoration of public facilities damaged during the period of December 14th through 17th, 2016, under a presidential major disaster declaration FEMA number DR 4296 OR. And the narrative for us is that, as many of you know, Lane County Public Works and other divisions were in support of an ice event that happened over that three days, which we are still working on and will be working on probably into the summer. We have done a lot of the debris cleanup, but I'm here bearing good news that we have support, our support for FEMA's funding, at least at their reimbursement rates for our work, and the President has authorized that funding at this point, and we are looking to get authorization for the county administrator to be able to sign into that agreement with FEMA so we can get that check coming our way.
Excellent.
And I'm holding it up for any more information you guys need from me.
Questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Bozovic.
First, I just want to thank you and the folks at Public Works, and there were many other departments involved in our response to that ice storm. Everybody from our facilities, guys that cleaned up the local sites down here downtown and our campuses downtown, to, you know, the Sheriff's Department and helping apply for all these grants and coordinating, getting all the information together to get us above the limits to get this grant. The one question I have is, it notes that FEMA will contribute 85-75 percent, and it will have to have 15-25 percent match. It's kind of unusual to see that kind of in a written board order where it isn't, you know, as a particular number. Is that just a range of how that works with FEMA or, you know?
It is. It's kind of what they're, it's their alternate recovery or what used to be known as the Sandy Act. So what they tried to do was stimulate municipalities to respond in a much more efficient manner after the Sandy event. So what they do is they authorize an increased funding at the zero to 30-day window, and then it decreases 5 percent every 30 days until 90, and then they pay at the 75 percent reimbursement for the remainder of the 180 days that were authorized to do what's called Category A, which is the storm cleanup.
So that awesome, you know, multiple, you know, 12-hour shifts, 24 hours around the clock response you guys made to reopen all the roads will probably get 85 percent reimbursement because it was in that 30-day window.
Yeah, and we've just-
And as we drag on cleaning up the branches that are still in the right-of-way along Clear Lake Road that I see every day coming in.
Yeah, those piles are definitely haunting in people's eyes these days, but, you know, we've been working around the clock. It's still our primary focus, but that first 30 days was where the bulk of the work did occur. So we'll see hopefully that reimbursement rate for straight time and all the overtime hours. And at this point, even after that 15 percent pullout, the reimbursement that we've calculated just for roads is over $400,000 in the first 30 days.
Wow.
And that's not including facilities, parks, and other divisions.
Remarkable. Further comments, questions?
I think I speak for everybody when I offer thanks to you and to the staff from 626 and from Admin Pro who put in lots and lots of extra hours to make sure that people got service and that emergencies were being met. And because of that, very few people went without critical life sustaining services while we were, throughout the entire double emergency that we encountered. So thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
So we have them before us, Order, is that the number ones? Order 17-0, excuse me, 17-02-14-11. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Bozovic.
So I'll move approval of Order 17-02-14-11.
Second.
Moved in second. A discussion to the motion. Seeing and hearing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Orin, thank you very much. And once again, pass along the thanks.
Definitely will. Appreciate it, Commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. Mokrheyski, I'll ask you this question right now. We do have an item of emergency business this afternoon. I'll just wait for your queue, at which point we should step, move forward with that particular item, or we can insert it any place in the ongoing queue, so.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Dingell's here. What's that? You want to keep going? Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Then we'll move along with the Order 17-2-14-12 in the matter of appointing a member to the Lane County Planning Commission. And today we have Mr. Mokrheyski, Amber Bell, and Lydia McKinney.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. As you know, the Planning Commission currently has one at-large non-coastal vacancy, and the board appointed a subcommittee to interview candidates in January. We had a strong pool consisting of four very qualified candidates. The subcommittee conducted interviews on January 26th, and they identified two finalists. The board today is asked to evaluate those two finalists and to appoint one new member to the Planning Commission. The subcommittee identified a few topics that they would like the board to weigh when evaluating the two finalists before making a determination on which candidate to appoint. Also, their staff would like to point out and discuss with the board, there's also one coastal vacancy currently that's not yet been filled. Staffs received direction from the board to evaluate, propose an amendment to a requirement in the Planning Commission bylaws and lane manual requiring that at least two of nine voting members be from a coastal area. Staff anticipate that we could return with this proposed amendment by early summer and suggest that one potential way to fill the coastal vacancy may be to later recommend appointing this second finalist from today's process to that position. If the board's amenable to this, we could return at a later date with the board recommending appointment of that second finalist.
Excellent. Thank you. I'll ask for questions in just a moment. The two finalists are Stephen Dignam and Robert Weeks, and our subcommittee were Commissioner Bozovic and Commissioner Stewart. Commissioner Bozovic, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I would say, you know, all four candidates were good candidates, and these two were probably the strongest, and they were strong for different reasons. And it got to be where Fay and I felt uncomfortable, Commissioner Stewart, I should say, and I felt uncomfortable making the choice between the two because it was kind of a policy choice. You know, Mr. Dignam has served on the Planning Commission previously, so he understands our land use system and the process very well and would hit the ground running. The, Mr. Weeks, though, lives in an area of the county that is completely unrepresented on the Planning Commission right now, the Mackenzie River Valley. We have nobody in the Mackenzie River watershed serving on the Planning Commission as we look at issues of adhering to the new reasonable and prudent alternative of the biological opinion on the FEMA flood insurance thing, which is going to have a lot of impact up the Mackenzie. You know, is it useful to have that geographic representation? The other issue that we're weighing between is, you know, is it a good thing to reappoint somebody that's already served and bring him back on there so we're, you know, seeing the same people serving as Planning Commission for long periods of time? Or is it better to appoint somebody new to the commission? So there's sort of this, this warring set of policy priorities in our minds, and we're looking to the board maybe to provide some direction around what's more important to you? Is that, that long-term experience with the Planning Commission really important? Or is it, you know, that geographic and new, new, new face, new ideas, bringing in a different perspective important? So kind of, you know, you all probably, a lot of you probably know Mr. Dignam from his, his work at ElCog and doing the Small Business Administration Loan Management and a few other programs over there in economic development. Has no relationship with any of their land planning services at all, so there's no, he doesn't have a conflict there. Mr. Weeks is a former tanker captain and moved into doing consulting to the petroleum industry, and in his last job was in charge of Chevron's operations in the country of Turkey. So he's, he's a very strong manager and, and has a very, you know, sharp mind and I think would, would serve well and would come up to speed fairly quickly. So it's kind of, those are the, those are the choices we're offering the board. So I kind of was hoping to get some input from the rest of the board about those, those kind of policy questions about experience and previous service on Planning Commission versus geographic diversity and a new, a new face.
Thank you for that summary, Commissioner Bozovic. Commissioner Stewart?
I don't believe I have anything else to add. I think Commissioner Bozovic has done a great job in really trying to express the difficulty we had in trying to narrow it down to one individual, you know? Mr. Dignam, great service over the term that he served as a Planning Commission, certainly has a great passion to want to continue to, to serve. He's had a time, timeout period, and like Commissioner Bozovic said, up to speed, be, be right, ready to understand what his duties would be as a Planning Commission. And we do have a fairly active Planning Commission at this time. We have lots of applications, complicated applications, and I know that he would be tapped fairly quickly to be able to be a part of that. Then Mr. Weeks, as Commissioner Bozovic said, he lives up the Mackenzie. He's a very active member up the Mackenzie. He was present at the Clearwater Coalition meeting that I attended where Mr. Miller gave a presentation about the biological opinion that's been rendered at this point with FEMA. And so, you know, we, we felt that there might be some value of having some geographical representation because that, that person could really interface with the community and be able to, to talk about the challenges ahead. So it's kind of interesting to hear that there might actually be an opportunity based on a policy decision to appoint both those individuals, which I would highly support.
Thank you. And before I ask for further comment, I'll, I had a similar experience when I was on the city council in Eugene back in 96 or 97. We were appointing a Planning Commissioner, and one option was somebody with depth of experience in neighborhood issues and, and citywide experience. The other person was geographically more suited in that the first persons, if they had had children, they would have gone to South Eugene High School, and everybody else on the Planning Commission's children went to South Eugene High School. So not much geographic diversity there. So the other person, I stepped down from the podium, stood at the mic, not here, but over in council chambers, and I argued we need geographic representation, and I lost. And we appointed the person who's, who at the time lived in the South Eugene District. That was John Belcher. We did okay. So what I'm saying is, we have a tough decision here. It's a decision that really there is no, no one person that really is going to probably bring more to the table, but they'll bring different things to the table. So we'll have a discussion. And as I pointed out, Amber, we do have an opportunity potentially with a slight change in policy to ultimately appoint both people. So further discussion, Commissioner Sorenson.
That actually anticipated my question about the geographic diversity on the Planning Commission. And could you kind of give us an overview of where the Planning Commission members hail from?
Like, I got it right here. I can read it off.
Oh, good. Okay.
So Dwight Kuhn is in the Blatchley, Oregon, area. Randy Lettich is in Eugene on Marie Lane. Charles C. Kaler lives in, on Pioneer Pike in Eugene. Gary Rose is in Florence. Ryan Sisson, his address is his work address in Eugene, but he lives in Cottage Grove. Jason Thiel's Field lives in Junction City. Larry Thorpe is in Springfield.
So it sounds pretty diverse at this time. Okay. Thank you.
With the exception of perhaps East Lane County, south and west, and both cities. That's it. Okay. Further conversation, discussion, Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my thought, I mean, I would, just looking at, obviously you were able to interview them both. Looking over the applications, you know, you got two, two folks, two that seem to do well in their, in their professions. The one thing I'll point out is, is when you look at our current planning commission, I would view it as a very strong planning commission, no doubt, very highly knowledgeable. My, you know, and I've worked with Steve quite a bit over the years, and obviously he'd be very competent to be able to step right in. My point, though, is that if there was ever a time if we were interested in having a fresh face, I think the time would be now because of the fact you have such strong leadership and such strong background in land use in Lane County that whomever's new would, would be able to really learn. And just looking at his background, it's pretty obvious he can pick up on things very quickly and given the, his background and, and his profession. So if there was ever a time to pick somebody new and a fresh face, it would be, it would be now. And I've known Larry Thorpe for a long time, and when he was a land use attorney and I was mayor, he'd come walking in, he's one of those folks I'd go, oh crap. So because he was so knowledgeable, he's, he's so good as a land use attorney, and I think when you look at Ryan and Randy, obviously Randy Lettich's been around a long time. I mean, we have a strong planning commission. So my view is, unless, unless this is the opportunity, as mentioned, if, if there's a spot for both of them, that would be fantastic. But if there is an opportunity to put somebody in that's new, I think this, the timing would be absolutely right. And especially if, looking if, he says he's a strong manager, well, in my view, if you're a strong manager, you're going to gravitate to somebody and be willing to be, in a sense, be willing to learn from that individual, really on land use in, in Lane County. You would gravitate to staff, you would work with staff, you'd learn as much as you possibly can. So that's, that's my thoughts. But if there's an opportunity to, to put both of them on, boy, I'm like Commissioner Stewart, I would, I would absolutely support that and applaud that.
Thank you. Further discussion? Then we have before us two options, and the subcommittee has deferred to the board as a whole regarding making the choice of options. So I'll, and Lydia, please.
Thanks. If I could just make one comment. So as Amber mentioned, and, and we really do support being able to appoint both of them. The way that we currently have the board order is for you to appoint one person, and again, so what we'd recommend is appoint the person that you think that would start first. And then if you give us that direction that you would like the other person to be appointed once we do the lane manual changes, then we can, we'll come back with those lane manual changes and a board order specifically appointing that person. So again, if that's the direction you want us to take, just give us some clarity on that, and we'll make sure to bring that order back.
Thank you. Commissioner Stewart?
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that the board appoint Mr. Weeks to, to the current available position on the Planning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll call for discussion to the motion. First, a clarification, Ms. McKinney, we, should we opt to move forward with the second person as the potential board member from what has been the coastal Florence district? Would we need to reconvene that subcommittee, or can we move forward just with order, by order or by?
It's up to the board, but I would say if the board is all in agreement, there wouldn't be a need to reconvene the subcommittee.
Excellent. Discussion to the motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stewart?
I'd just like to take this moment to thank Amber for the great work that she did in preparing us for the interviews. This has been, it's been a while since we've actually done interviews, and I really appreciated the work that she put into making sure that the process was, you know, I guess thorough and also transparent, and, and it was really nice to have the staff support, so thank you, Amber.
Very good. Further discussion to the motion. Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the, the question, I'm, I don't think I fell asleep just then, but just want to make sure. So I, I support the idea of, of Mr. Weeks. And so what's the direction that's been given then as far as the next person? You said we don't have to come back to, to a subcommittee, but what's the, what's the direction or has the board given direction? What, what do we?
I, I think after the vote.
Is that a second motion? Got it. Okay, thank you.
We'll move forward with that.
Got it. Okay. I know, maybe I did fall asleep, so, all right. Thank you.
This is not a trodden, oft-trodden path.
No.
Very good. Then, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Then further discussion regarding the, what has been the Florence, the second Florence or coastal position. Amber, anything to say about that?
Well, I think we would just, in my mind, return to the board with recommendations to amend the bylaws, Planning Commission bylaws, and lane manual to omit or modify that geographic requirement. And then at that time, we could either concurrently bring an order to the board recommending the second finalists, or we could bring a separate order as a consent calendar item.
Excellent. Then without, without opposition from the board, I'll suggest that we ask you to do that, and probably not as a consent calendar item, as a regular, regular item.
Yes. It will be, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it will be a lane manual change, so that, of course, will require a board order and will work with our legal counsel. It also requires a bylaws change, so Amber and I will go to the Planning Commission before we come back to you, have them vote on that. They will make a recommendation and come back to you. So we'll get that done, and it will probably take us until, you know, late May, early June. And then we can also bring that order recommending that Mr. Dignam be appointed because he was a finalist in this process, if that's what you want to see us do.
And we don't need to go through interviews again because we've done that, and we would presume that Mr. Dignam is, is willing to and anticipating potentially being, being selected. Excellent. Any further discussion? Then we'll look for a, sometime in May, perhaps, a board order changing the lane manual after discussion with the Planning Commission, and another order potentially appointing Mr. Dignam. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
I was waiting for that one. Once again, not, not a oft-trodden path. Mr. Mokrheyski, how are we doing on the emergency item?
Well, we're not doing so good.
Okay.
But we'll get there.
We will get there.
So I, what do you want to do, Steve? You want to finish the Public Works items or?
This is going to be quick.
Let's do this one. Why don't we do this one, and then if it's all right, do the emergency item before the Hazel Dale? Does that work?
Very good. And, and my, my concern is that we do have the sheriff and staff here, so just that we're at their, not at their mercy by any means, but certainly responsive to them. Then we'll move afor, move forward then with the next item, which is Order 17-02-14-13 in the matter of electing whether or not to hear an appeal of a hearings court, a hearings official affirmed decision approving a forest template dwelling in the impacted forest land zone F2. And today, we once again have Mr. Mokrheyski and Lydia, Amber Bell.
Thank you. For the record again, Amber Bell, staff planner with Land Management Division. And in, in the matter before you, the board is asked to elect whether or not to conduct an on-the-record hearing for an appeal of a hearings official decision of a forest template dwelling in the impacted forest land zone. This appeal is much the same as other similar appeals of forest template dwellings that you've seen in the last year, in that the appellate land watch, Lane County, is requesting that the board not conduct an on-the-record hearing and adopt the hearings official's decision as the final county decision. The appeal statement also includes issues brought to the board previously, in this case that the parcel count criteria have not been met. Staffs evaluated the criteria applicable to determining whether an on-the-record hearing should be held in lane code 14.603 and found that none of the criteria had been met. More specifically, the issues raised are not of county-wide significance. There's not a need for policy guidance. The hearings official and prior decisions have, has already provided policy guidance. Issues do not involve a unique environmental resource, and neither the hearings official nor the planning director is recommended on-the-record review. Therefore, the planning director respectfully recommends that the board elect not to conduct an on-the-record hearing and to adopt the hearings official decision as the final county decision.
Excellent. And we have before us the order which does reflect that recommendation. Discussion to the item, Commissioner Bozovic.
Actually, I was going to make a motion, if that's all right. So I'd move to adopt Order 17-02-14-13, electing not to conduct an on-the-record hearing for the appeal, affirm and adopt the Lane County hearings official decision as the county's final decision.
Second.
Moved in second. A discussion to the motion. Seeing and hearing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
And Mr. Mokrheyski.
Okay. We'll go back to the emergency item, and I think Mr. Dingell has, and there's information that's been posted online. Mr. Chair, you should have access to the revised agenda that's been posted online and the material there, and Mr. Dingell will walk through the amended language.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mokrhyeski. Chair Farr, the board members. What happened to you, recall, when we were coming up with the final or when there was discussions back and forth about the final language for the question? My recollection is that there was a lot of back and forth about trying to get in Critical Youth Services and somewhere in that process, a Scrivener's error occurred. And do you have the online version that has the red line version that shows what the words, what changed?
I am looking for it.
So what we settled on was Shaw County maintained jail beds, critical youth treatment services, levying 55 cents per thousand, assessed valuation commencing 2018. In the process, we dropped the ORS 280.070 sub 5 sub A requires that any tax measure of this nature include the length of the levy. And somehow that got, it was, you can see it's listed above and below, but somehow it got actually taken out of the question. So the way that it reads now, which complies with law, is Shaw County maintained jail beds, critical youth treatment services, levying 55 cents per thousand, assessed valuation for five years commencing 2018 slash 19. And the 19 is also required by statute, it has to be a fiscal year. So there's been a board order that's prepared. It is identical to the one that was signed earlier by the board, except for on page two, the third whereas, which indicates that there was a Scrivener's error. So it says whereas Exhibit A attached to Board Order 17-01-31-01 contained a Scrivener's error that failed to include for five years in the ballot question.
Excellent. And Mr. Dingle, I heard you discussing throughout the break, the number of words and how we make it so that we fall under the limit as far as words are concerned. I'm presuming that we did such.
Yes. Yes. And so what I did was I actually managed to keep the youth treatment services, the one part that got changed, and I know that there was some concern about this too, was we had to strike the levy funded to come up with the, and the and to come up with the appropriate four words for four or five years and 19 to comply with statutory language. I did, as I mentioned, I don't see that as that significant because literally it is sandwiched by the explanation.
And I'd just add to that, Mr. Chair. I had some concern about that, just as it related to the original language. And we went back, we looked at the question from 2013, and as I recall, the question said, from 2013, said Shaw County restore jail beds and critical youth treatment services. And so now the question is Shaw County maintain jail beds. So I think there's, it seems to me there's a level of consistency. I think the shit we've talked to the sheriff about and sheriff feels comfortable with that and it's relatively consistent with the original question from 2013.
And as I indicated, the way that this will appear, it's very clear because you'll notice the caption says renewal of jail and critical youth services, five-year levy. Then you have the question that I just read and then immediately underneath that will be the summary. So there shouldn't be any confusion on the part of voters on what they're voting for.
Excellent. And board, we're looking before is a question. This is the question as it will appear on the ballot.
That's correct.
And I'll read it verbatim. It's Shaw County maintain jail beds, critical youth treatment services, levying 0.55 per 1,000 in assessed valuation commencing 2018.
No.
For five years.
For five years.
Adding for five years commencing 2018 slash 19. This measure renews current local option taxes. So the part, Shaw County maintain jail beds, critical youth treatment services with no comma in between.
There's a comma.
Right. Is there a comma?
Jail beds.
Oh, that's an underline, not a strike through. Okay, that underline looks like a strike through, so it adds the comma.
We're limited by statute to 20 words.
Yeah. So we used an Oxford comma, you know.
Okay, well, there, so if that makes sense to everybody up here, we have then before is a board order 170214-14, which includes an additional whereas, which is Exhibit A attached to Board Order 17033101, contained a Scrivener's error, et cetera.
And I should mention that this will, if I could, I'm sorry, Chairman Farr, the one last thing I wanted to mention, this will be published for seven days. I'll sign the SEL 801 form a week from today, so this will not in any way impact getting on the levy as proposed for May of 17.
Excellent. Well, thank you for the catch and thank you for the fix. Sheriff? Thank you. Discussion to the motion, we don't have a motion yet, discussion to the item, or do we have a motion?
I was going to make the motion.
Commissioner Bozovic.
Thank you. So I move approval of Order 17021414 in the matter of referring a renewal of the public safety five-year local option levy to the voters of Lane County to maintain jail beds and critical youth services.
Second.
Moved in second, a discussion to the motion. Seeing and hearing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please.
Sure.
Excuse me, Mr. Mokrhyeski, sorry.
Sorry, minor technical clarification that there were actually two whereas's that were added. So there was, you mentioned one whereas, there were two whereas's that were added.
And it's this one immediately under that that says that the corrected proposed ballot language is attached as Exhibit A, which is also stated in the previous one that I mentioned.
Third and fourth on page two.
Wanted that on the.
Exhibit A. Okay, thank you very much. Further discussion to the motion? Then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Thank you once again for the work and bringing that emergency item back to us. Then we'll move forward with the balance of our agenda, item what was 12D. It's a fourth reading and setting the fifth reading and final deliberations ordinance on 13, on ordinance 1343 in the matter of amending the Lane County Rural Comprehensive Plan, RCP, to add a quarry site to the inventory of significant mineral and aggregate sites. Then Mr. Mokrhyeski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Deanna, are you going to take it?
Sure. Good afternoon, Chair and other board of commissioners. I am Deanna Wright for the record, Staff Planner for the Hazeldale Plan Amendment Application. So today, we're before you to request a deferment to March 14th, 2017 board meeting on this item. The last time we met on this verbally, we stated that we would return today for deliberations. However, staff in the applicant agreed that we needed more time to create and review the findings and the ordinance. You will receive these documents in a few weeks for your review and final decision on March 14th. We're here to, if there's any questions regarding the deferment, if not, I guess we'll return then.
Thank you, Dan. Any discussion to the, any questions or comments? Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So Deanna, I appreciate being copied. There's a question that was posed to me by one of the folks that live up in the area in regards to notification of today's discussion and then a potential additional discussion. So I just want to make sure notification requirements are being met and that we're not in violation of any type of process.
I'll jump in, sure. Yeah, I saw maybe what you're referring to, a copy of an email from a woman, whose name I can't remember, who was discussing the requirements of notice for the hearing. And counsel that, of course, the hearing has been closed for a while, while we're in now is deliberation and readings of the ordinance. So there isn't a hearing to be noticed. In terms of legal notice for this, it was set, for the discussion was set for today at the last time we got together today, if the board decides to read and roll this forward would be the notice of the next event. And so that is the notice requirement is essentially the public action taken by the board to do that.
Okay.
And I would also note, I think Deanna included this in her response, but we did update our website. So again, that information was posted. We didn't send out a public notice again because it's not required and we wouldn't want to notify some people and not others. But Deanna did notify the, I mean, update the website, I think, back in January, so that that information was made public.
Excellent.
If I might just, the individual was Kathy Picorni, was, posed the question. And I just wanted to have this conversation in public and in open that, you know, what the process is, what the legal requirements are, because I suspect that this, whatever, you know, our final decision probably will be challenged. So I just want to make sure that we have enough information on the record and through our process to defend it. So thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the side? And then we need a motion? Commissioner Bozovic?
So I'll move the fourth reading and setting the fifth reading and final deliberations of ordinance number PA 1343 to, was it March 14th?
14.
Yeah, there it is, March 14th, sorry. 2017.
Okay. And do we want to time certain on that or?
Yeah, I was just asking, do you need it for one?
You don't need it timed certain. Typically, they'll be at 1:30 or thereafter, I think, is what you've done with. Then we have a motion?
Second.
Moved in second, a discussion to the motion. This is a motion to pass a fourth reading and set the fifth reading on March 14th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then we will step back to this morning's agenda. And Mr. Mokrhyeski, announcements?
Just a couple of quick things, Mr. Chair. Friday night, a number of us attended the Black History Month dinner put on by the Blacks in government and heard a great talk from retired Senator Margaret Carter. She did a fantastic job and a number of folks there and really appreciated the participation. I know Commissioner Farr was in attendance, District Attorney Pearlau was there, Mr. Rickoff, Mo Young, a number of staff from Health, from Human Resources, from Public Works, and Health and Human Services. So that was a nice opportunity to connect with the community. Laura Vincent, our recruitment coordinator, was actually invited up to say a few words and she talked about the, our great efforts to reach out into the community. She referenced a number of recruitment and application workshops that she's hosting. She's been in Florence, I think she's headed to Cottage Grove, Cresswell, Vanita, Oak Ridge. So she's really getting out into the community and holding open houses and workshops for anyone interested in applying for jobs in Lane County and making that process, trying to streamline that process. We've actually seen a fairly significant increase in the number of applicants for positions, as well as the diversity of our applicant pool has increased since Laura has come on board. One really interesting statistic, it had, Mr. Rickoff is here, we had, I think it was taking us around 120 days to recruit for parole and probation positions because of the great work that Laura has done in partnership with the PMP staff. We reduced that from 120 days to 80 days. So 40-day reduction in the time that it takes, am I right there? In the time that it takes to recruit staff there. So just, she's doing a fantastic job. Our staff in Human Resources, wonderful job of doing outreach and improving recruitment there. So second item, had another opportunity, I mentioned the Lane Ingenuity Award that we did for communicable disease staff. Last week, I had an opportunity to present a Lane Ingenuity Award to our Human Resource and Finance staff for a great effort that they did in finding a solution to manage our retiree medical benefits while reducing 250 hours of staff time per year in that process. So a great job by Human Resources and Finance staff, another good example of continuous improvement, process improvement initiatives that are happening in the organization to make ourselves more efficient, use taxpayer resources in a really effective way. Final thing, I just thought I'd make a note because we had our leadership team meeting and then we kind of go silent on budget process until we hit May, when the proposed budget is presented to the Budget Committee. And just to let the board know that departments have been hard at work entering their budgets. That was finalized last week and our budget staff is now working in partnership with departments to make some final tweaks in creating the adjusted base. So those numbers are starting to come in, we'll have that adjusted base and then we'll start to do our work to continue to bring our structural deficit down to zero. Again, as the board knows, we're really focused on our internal costs and doing everything we can to shrink that pool of resources that we use for critical internal services that we provide. But the more that we can manage those expenses and put limited taxpayer resource into direct services for our residents, the better off we're going to be. So that effort continues and looking forward to structurally balancing our budget here going into next year. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Excellent.
Chair, can I, I need to do one thing. I want to thank Ms. Jones for all of her hard work today fixing that, creating that amended jail levy, board order and the language. She did all of that in between our morning session and this afternoon, so I wanted to thank her.
Thank you, Mr. Dingle. I had a chance to witness that work going on and it didn't look like it was easy work by any stretch of the imagination.
While also getting a revised version of our Tobacco 21 ordinance up online.
Yep.
The accolades just keep coming from Ms. Jones.
And I know Ms. Jones isn't listening now, but if she were, I'd say thank you very much.
She's always listening.
I will just, I will just make a note that, you know, this, that's an example of the internal staff that we have that are doing really critical work for the organization and it oftentimes goes unnoticed. And so thank you, Mr. Dingle, for calling out Ms. Jones for the fantastic work that she does.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Then back to this morning's, actually, we'll move right along, a review of assignments. Excuse me, Noel, items from Commissioners, Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just, I had a couple of updates. The first one I wanted to start with is, is I believe that I shared with the board at the last ONC meeting that there was potentially going to be an effort to challenge the Cascade Siskiyou National Monument expansion. And I would give you notice, I'll forward the email to you, that the ONC Association has filed in U.S. District Court of Columbia claiming that the designation of the Cascade Siskiyou National Monument, including the ONC land, is not, the Antiquities Act doesn't give the authority to include the ONC land. So just wanted to give you a heads up that that will probably be in the press tomorrow. And then I wanted to share also, I was able to participate in the last NACO Public Lands phone meeting and I wanted to share that there was legislation, you may know that there was legislation in the House that would, doesn't support the BLM's Planning 2.0 effort that has passed the House and is now headed to the Senate. And then if it comes out of the Senate, it will head to the President for his signature, basically negating the BLM's Planning 2.0. I would share too that this week or possibly next week, we should be receiving our Forest Service payment in regards to the 25% share of harvest checks. I will note that this will be subject to the sequestration of, I think it's 6.7% sequestration of the payment. And also, right now, there's an effort, a pretty strong effort in trying to reauthorize PILT. SRS is still kind of a little bit nebulous. There is an effort by Senator Wyden to try to, to get support for that, SRS being included in the President's budget. Just a note of three items that NACO will be working on in this next legislative session is some work on the Antiquities Act, Waters of the U.S., and also stream protection rules. So just wanted to keep you informed of what I'm hearing, might be some activity at the federal level. So thank you.
Thank you. Other items from Commissioners? Then Commissioner Bozovic.
Thank you. So going to be a few weeks before we get back together again, and I think some of us are going to be at NACO over that time in Washington, D.C. And I'll be, I've been appointed to the Justice and Public Safety Legislative Committee there, so I'll be looking at those issues. And along with that, coming up this Thursday and Friday in Salem is the Justice Reinvestment Act Summit. It's a statewide summit, I believe there's 900 people signed up to attend from across the state. And basically, it involves everybody that you would imagine that would be on the local Public Safety Coordinating Council in any area, from parole and probation folks to the courts, to the sheriff's office, to state police, to folks like sponsors and various nonprofit providers that we contract with. It kind of brings to, you know, getting to. It kind of brings to, you know, getting to, my other role is co-chair of the Public Safety Committee at Oregon Association of Counties, Association of Oregon Counties, sorry. And in, in that meeting, there's a lot of discussion about upcoming, the roadshow that the Ways and Means Committee is getting ready to do, and they are going to be in Eugene when most of us are going to be in NACO. So I'm hoping that some of the Commissioners that are not going to Washington, D.C., if they're going to be in the area, will think about attending and supplying some testimony in favor of funding community corrections and the Justice Reinvestment and Specialty Courts. Those all are proposed to have cuts in them. Those three sources of funding are what we really do to divert people from prison in Lane County. And the question right now is, do they need to open a women's prison or not? And we are currently helping with our jail because we've been certified to have the rape reduction certification from the federal government for our jail. We're allowed to take work release, female inmates early, early release from the women's prisons, so we're actually starting to help that situation by taking up to six of those early-release folks into our jail to prevent, to hold down the women's prison population, which has been running below forecast for the last month or so, couple of months. So hopefully, they won't have to open it. But it's really short-sighted to cut the funding to community corrections, specialty courts, and the Justice Reinvestment Program grants, because that is what funds Veterans Court, Drug Court, our 416 program, all these various programs. And it funds positions in the DA's office, parole and probation, it funds sponsors, it funds our cognitive behavioral therapy in the jail and by our parole and probation officers. It, it funds so many pieces of the puzzle that all work together. Those three funding sources are critical to keeping people out of prison. And they're talking about, if they do have to open another prison, it's $140 million for the capital cost and $52.3 million a biennium to operate it. So it's kind of short-sighted when they're talking about, you know, saving about $17 million total in those three programs with the cuts they're proposing, you know, really short-sighted. So if any of you guys need talking points or whatever, to go to the Ways and Means Committee, I'd appreciate you contacting me, and anyone else that wants to come as a citizen and testify to the Ways and Means Committee when they're here on, I think it's February 25th, down at the LCC, please do, and ask them to fully fund those programs, because they are critical to us diverting folks out of prison, and also trying to keep mentally ill people out of our jail system.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovic. Any other announcements? Commissioner Announcements, Commissioner Liken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So real quickly, the ALC Transportation Committee meeting yesterday, it's always fun when you, when you have an agenda, and you just might as well throw it out the door. Because we had a special guest who crashed our party, Senator Betsy Johnson did. And instead of a 15-minute item on the audit, we ended up with an hour of conversation with Senator Johnson. And, but she did make it very clear, which I thought was fantastic, is that she made it clear to us that the counties will play a pivotal role in a transportation package. And it was always, it's always good to hear that. As we know, Senator Johnson is, is on the Joint Transportation Committee, and she's also obviously a very, very important vote in the Senate in order to move something like this along. But it was pretty good, knowing that we had an agenda, and it's like, well, we can just take this and throw it out the door. But it was well worth it. Having, basically, Senator Johnson's just attention to our Transportation Committee for an hour was well worth it, and I was pleased she was able to make it and actually visit with us and just let us know how important counties will play the role that's going to be played with the upcoming legislature for a transportation package. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Liken. Further announcements? Then I'll just make one. Mr. Morgerhaiske, thank you for bringing up the big award ceremony and, and meeting on Friday night. That was really pretty exciting, what happened. Had a chance to, as you mentioned, listen to Margaret Carter, long-term Senator, Representative, prior to that, I'm certain that Commissioner Sorenson served with Senator Carter in the Senate.
Representative.
Representative at the time. She was, she was, boy, at 81 years old, she lit the room up, and then she took the microphone and belted out a Ella Fitzgerald gospel song that rattled the rafters. It was pretty amazing. And apologized for having a cold. My gosh. So, but that being said, it was a very, very good evening. I enjoyed specifically, and I wanted to point out, that Laura stood up impromptu, as she was called up to the mic, to talk about our recruiting efforts in Lane County. And without preparing, she just, once again, she set everybody on fire by talking about the recruiting efforts, particularly the recruiting efforts as it addresses equity and access and inclusion. And, and I've almost got a standing ovation at the end of her, at the end of her talk. So that was very well done. I thought Lane County staff was very well represented there, and, and just had a very good meeting that, that really was a fruitful and positive event for the evening. The last thing I'd like to mention is that FUSE continues, Frequent User System Engagement is continuing in Lane County. And we're using that as a tool to help us, help guide us in Operation 600, which will be adding 600 supportive housing units for, for people with behavioral health disorders. FUSE is the program that is identifying the, originally, it was supposed to be 100 men and/or women who are most frequently engaging systems in Lane County, as being the, the first people who should be offered housing to make certain that they aren't visiting the emergency rooms, being called on, being the recipients of police calls, et cetera. So who is participating in FUSE? Just a quick list of it is Eugene Police Department, Springfield Police Department, Eugene Muni Court, Lane County Jail, Fire and Emergency Services 911, Trillium, Peace Health, McKenzie Willamette, Cahoots, Springfield Court, HMIS, Lane Transit District, HACSA, Lane Council of Governments, Lane County Health and Human Services, and Behavioral Health and Human Services, Shelter Care Laurel Hill, Lane County Human Services Division, the list goes on, identifying the men and women who are causing the greatest, not only the stress in their own lives by requiring the services, but stress on the system by requiring more what are expensive, time-consuming, and, and far-reaching services. So the, the effort goes on in conjunction with Shelter Care. And Doug Daniel is Lane County staff who is doing much of the work on that. I'd like to commend him on the presentation that he's being made, he is making, and to Shelter Care and others, and also to a presentation last Friday morning to the Chamber of Commerce's Local Government Affairs Committee. So we're moving forward with it, and identifying how to best serve the people who have the greatest needs, and at the same time, best free up our system to, to serve more people. Any further announcements? Then we'll move along to agenda team requests. We have, Commissioner Liken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we heard today from Mr. Frohmeyer on his thoughts and proposals on a, on what he calls a score runoff voting. I would be, I don't know if we have head nods. I'm, I'm intrigued by it, but part of it is, I don't necessarily think, because our election process is broken by any stretch of the imagination. In fact, I'm going to suggest that even if we did something like this, we made, the results may be similar. What I'd be interested in is, is even finding out if this financially is even feasible. I mean, I don't know, because you'd have to completely, looks like you'd have to basically overhaul our election system here in Lane County. Is it worth the effort or not? I don't know, we, we won't know that until we ask staff to maybe do, take a look at this, at least preliminarily, and, and get back to us if, if this is even worth referring back, something, referring something to the voters. So I'd like to at least get that information. Obviously, it's going to take more than 15 minutes, and so I'm interested, so I'm one head nod. I don't know if any other Commissioners are, are interested in at least looking at it, and then getting a report back if it's even worth referring to the, referring something to the voters.
I'd like to hear more, Commissioner Bozovic?
Thank you. So I, I would support looking into it, but I want to have some fairly specific questions answered. One is if we even have the equipment to currently work with this kind of a ballot. I don't think our optical scanning system will work with this kind of ballot system, which means our ability to refer something to May is nearly impossible. And then I guess the secondary question that is, is what is the deadline for the Board to actually refer an informational question to the ballot, which we always have the right to do? It's basically a public opinion poll question, but that's what this would be. So, you know, I know we're getting really tight to that deadline, so that's kind of, it's a two-fold thing I'd like to look at. Personally, it's an interesting idea, it has some, some ability to be fair, but frankly, I would not be a Commissioner if this system weren't in place. Because it took running a, a general to get the voters to know me well enough to actually win my election, the primary season with a crowded field, I, you know, because nobody got 50%, I just happened to be the second highest person. Name recognition and all that were difficult to overcome. You know, I, I'm concerned about a system like this generally picking the person with highest name recognition, not necessarily the best candidate, or having a, a second shot at educating the voters on the candidates and getting to really know the candidates. But I'm willing to test the system if we can overcome those two obstacles.
Very good. Commissioner Sorenson?
I think at this stage, there are a lot of questions that the Board would, and the public would need answers to. And so I think I'd prefer to, rather than, you know, stake out a position of, you know, what we should do, I think I would rather stick with, you know, a series of questions about, that, that you guys could answer and bring back, and then if there was sufficient interest, we'd have a work session on that material. So just to start, you know, a series of bullet points quickly on this, I would say, you know, number one is, does the Board have authority to do this, to have a different type of voting system? And what are the legal changes that would need to be made, most notably, I guess, the Lane County Charter, which sets up a primary and general election system, not a, not a, you know, instant runoff-type election. Another one would be the timing. I think Commissioner Bozovic talked about that a little bit, but I'm, I'm more interested in pushing it out a little further, so I'm interested in, in November, the timeline for the November election. When would the Board have to make a decision in referring a ballot measure to the public? I'm also interested in, in whether this has been done elsewhere, and, and what the savings are. And I think the, the points that were made earlier about, who does this advantage? Does it advantage people that are better known? Does it advantage some sort of ideological array of candidates? I'm not quite sure how you would answer that, but I think that's one of the things that the sponsors of this are trying to point out. I'm very interested in the cost of how much would cost to put this measure out to the voters in November. I'm interested in knowing if there's any Oregon statutory limits on the ability of local governments, separate from our charter. I think it was a great question, what are, do our optical scan machines, can they, can they accept ballots like this? Is that something that we're set up for? Even in the event that he moves ahead with his proposal for an initiative, do we have the ability then to count those votes if, if, if the voters approved a citizen initiative or county referral? And probably other. Other, other's always a big category.
Thanks, Commissioner Sorenson. Rather than all of us rack our brains on short noses such as it is, Commissioner Liken, does that satisfy your request that we just send questions and see if there is a warrant for a, for a work session subsequent to this? Is that, Commissioner Stewart?
Would it be possible, maybe, for staff to bring back those questions in an agenda item? And then if the questions seem to be responsive or warrant a work session, then we probably would include Mr. Frohmeyer at a later date in a work session. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yeah, we can do that. Mr. Rickoff had some comments to respond, but the answer is yes, we can certainly get answers to all of these questions and then come back, I think sometime in March, you know, one of the meetings in March would be fine.
And it was a pretty comprehensive list, you probably don't need further questions beyond that. But go ahead, Mr. Rickoff, please.
Well, with the inclusion of other, I think we're in, in good shape. Chair Farr, Commissioners, I did have a chance, at the invitation of Commissioner Stewart, to meet with Mr. Frohmeyer yesterday evening, and had a quick chance to talk with the county clerk, Cheryl Betchart. As you may know, she does serve on the Futures Committee of the Oregon Clerks Association, so they've actually been looking at this issue during the November election. Benton County voters voted in ranked choice voting system, which is slightly different. And Benton, right now, is, is going through many of these same questions for that system. The score runoff voting system is relatively new, our optical scanners at this point. At this point, there is nothing certified by the Secretary of State that, there's no software currently certified by the Secretary of State that can do the tabulation that the system is looking for. So it, it is a bit premature, and we would need to overcome that hurdle, but it is an active conversation across the state. So I think our timing is, is excellent for this in general, although for us to put something on the May ballot, there's no delineation between a mock or an advisory election with a regular measure. So all of those deadlines that we just reviewed as part of the jail levy would hold true for us placing something on the ballot right here and now for May, which would mean that you would need to have the caption, question, and summary done by February 24th to qualify for the May ballot.
Mr. Chair, can you get that done this week?
I, I just did it, actually. We can talk about it right now if you want.
I think Ms. Jones just.
Yeah, I was going to say. Yeah, yeah, here it is.
Chair Farr, I would be remiss, as the Director of Operations and the individual that oversees the work of the county clerk, to not give a personal thanks to Diana Jones for her Herculean lift and assistance in making sure things are correct and timely. She really did a tremendous piece of work today.
Thank you, Mr. Rickoff. Excellent. Further agenda team requests? We had one that was talked about a little bit, that I'm not positive that we responded to closely, and that is a, a response from the sheriff regarding, regarding the response to immigration questions?
Yes. Are we on review assignments?
Yeah, oh, we already had that request, don't need to rehash your request. Okay. We'll move along then to.
Yeah, I, I had that on my list, so I have two assignments on the list. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I didn't know.
Then we'll, we'll move to review of assignments.
Okay. So I have, I had the item that we just talked about, the Mr. Frohmeyer's request, and we will come back to the Board with answers on that. And then Commissioner Stewart's earlier request to have the sheriff, and I think the DA, and we'll talk about other staff that is going to be involved in that conversation, particularly on March 1st at the Equity and Access Board, to bring an item to the Board, I think, early March, hopefully, March 7th or 14th, we can have an update for the Board on ORS 181A and related issues.
Excellent. Very good. Any adjustments to the assignments? Then we have no need for further executive session today. Other business, our next Board meeting is March 7th, will be down the next two Tuesdays, and the March 7th meeting, Chair Bozovic will, Vice Chair.
Here for the day.
Will be, will chair the March 7th meeting.
Mr. Chair, I, I emailed Ms. Jones earlier today, and she said that we were meeting on March 6th as well.
On March 6th, which is the.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's the elk, the transportation.
Correct, correct. The next regular Board.
Yeah.
The JEO with Eugene.
Yeah, okay, very good. I just.
Thank you.
March 7th was mentioned several times today, and I just wanted to double-check. That meeting's still on.
Yes.
Yeah, gotcha.
The next regular Board meeting will be the 7th, but the, there is a meeting of the Board on the 6th. Very good. Anything further? Commissioner Stewart?
I have on my calendar a HACSA meeting.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow at 2:30.
But that is HACSA?
Yeah, but five of us, so it's a friendly reminder that we.
We will all be there for the HACSA meeting tomorrow. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? Then with no further need for executive session, we are adjourned.